Okay, I hereby call the meeting of the Board of Finance Purchasing Policy Committee's order. Let me do the pleasure, we should do the pleasure. Okay, do we need to do that again?
No.
I can make a motion to like Mary there as the chairman of the subcommittee.
I'd like to second that. Yeah, motion and properly second.
I think you're on omnibus one, maybe Jim Myers is vice chair. Secretary.
Second.
A second.
All right, so you're doing all three at once, that's good.
Okay.
We were also discussing dates.
So can I turn this over to you this year?
Sure. I guess while we're on the official first meeting, things we should set a regular calendar because that way we could approve minutes.
Good.
Um, so we didn't really plan anything for it, and I don't know how many times we will need to meet, so should we set two tentative meetings and then in case we need them and if not, we can cancel.
That's fine. Yeah.
Um, anyone have any priorities that you want to, I think wherever we decide we're going to make any changes, we want to do that before the end of the year, like before June. There are, like, I'd like to go back to the full board in June, probably for the summer, if there's anything to recommend.
How many meetings between now and June, if this one is, this just, this one doesn't count, then it'd be two more?
So, yeah, that's what I was thinking, schedule two more in case.
Okay.
If we cancel them, we cancel.
Okay.
Um, so one probably should definitely be in May because we don't want to put too many, I don't know if we want to do one middle of April and then one in May.
Fine, March was packed, so.
Are we trying to do Mondays? It sounded like that was the best for.
So I have one Monday, Sunday, Monday.
Yes. So I can do as early as six on Mondays.
Me too. Um, so how about oh April 28th, so I don't know, it's a holiday.
I can do the 28th. So far in advance, I don't know. So why don't you say the 28th, six for now, right?
Okay, I found out that May 19th. So I can holidays.
May 19th. That is, that's June. Yeah, that's, that should be fine. So or 28th and by 19th six. Obviously, they can be moved, right, if we have to.
Those states were.
They did, yeah.
Okay, so I'll shoot to schedule two meetings. Um, April 28th at six and May 19th at six.
Okay. Second minute.
All of them. Okay, so now we will go back to minimum three. As if you consider an act of time. Oh, that is, that was the thing, so you consider that means schedule. Um, okay, so now we're to, I'm looking forward to hear an update from the town's purchasing director and the purchasing policy. So as a matter of background, I guess the Board of Finance about a year ago put in a new purchasing policy that was approved and because you're also newly wanted to give you some time to go through the purchase policy, see what works, what doesn't, and make any recommendations to us. Um, and I I think I want to introduce you for the meeting, so I, your first thing to Adam, but I'm not sure if you're listening.
Yeah, no, thank you, I'm Adam Toulon, and somehow I actually just had my two-year anniversary already, I don't know how that happened, but it's kind of a testament to how long this process has been to get the policy up and running. Um, so I'll just, I'll start by saying, thanks for having me, and I'm honestly delighted that this subcommittee is back in action. Um, I've, I've felt a little bit um, without blaming anybody, I don't mean it that way, I've felt a little bit rudderless um, because we had sort of a temporary or a partial approval of the policy and then you know, it was about another year before I was able to get back to have the final, the final, final document approved, so um, so I'm really happy to have you guys, even if we don't end up needing to meet that much. Uh, this is really great. Um, so I don't, I didn't know exactly what kind of format, what kind of information you'd want. Um, I don't really have a, any slides prepared or anything tonight, but I did want to share that um, at Lori Charlton's recommendation, I met with Connie Saxel, the internal auditor, who's out sick today unfortunately, um, about a month ago to sort of start going over priorities and how that might also interplay with her role as the auditor, but um, we came up with a tentative list of the sort of initial ideas that I'll probably want to bring to you guys um, as recommended changes. Um, so I don't know, do you want me to just dive into that, or do you have any questions for me to start?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I, yeah, just like, this is background, is when we originally came in front of the full board in September and so what I think what we have as a backup here is the actual final version of the policy that you edited. Did we ever get the redlined the redline draft?
Ooh.
Because I think, I think basically what happened is that we sort of went for this word, but I never really knew what to do because there were, we didn't know, we didn't know the changes that were made, so.
Yeah, no, I will get that, I'll, um, I should be able to access that from home, so I can send that to you tonight after we get off. Um, so at least you guys on the subcommittee can have it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that, I completely escaped my mind after you voted to approve, I moved on with my life, I guess, but, oh, no, but I remember that now that you say it. So, oh, just quickly, so now, um, the Board of Ed, you know, I work closely with my counterparts in the Board of Ed or Fairfield Public Schools. Um, I don't know if you know many of them by name, but Heather Robinson is a counterpart of mine over there in the business office. She's prepared a a training for all of the school admins and people, you know, it's sort of in the data entry level. Um, the training for them in March that I'll be uh, leading with her, and then we're also going to be preparing in, in February into March um, some trainings on the town side that'll have sort of a double goal of not just teaching the policy, but also trying to figure out if there's things we can be doing to better serve you know, the, the internal departments, because we're ultimately an internal customer service agency in a sense, we need to do what we can to make sure the departments are getting what they need. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. I just wanted to mention that before I forgot, unless I look through my papers. Um, yeah, I think honestly, I think the hot button issues, and I've mentioned these in briefly in my presentations to the whole board previously, we need to figure out what to do about the local MRO program, which is something that's identified in the policy, and I just think it's pretty confusing and vague, and I'm just not really sure what the end goal is, so that's definitely a priority of mine. Um, I also want to strengthen the bid protest policy. Um, we're very fortunate that we don't really get many bid protests, that's, you know, I like to think a testament to the fact that we're doing things the right way, but still, in the event it could happen, I think we need to have a very clear policy in place.
What then? If you don't go out to bid, like situation, someone would have thought they should have gone out to bid and you didn't because you used the list or some, a specific service? Or?
That's a really interesting question.
Or it's just if they protest a specific bid.
So this, what I'm talking about is specifically to a bid, but I mean, you do, you do raise an interesting point, that's something I'll need to think about. Um, there should be an avenue for people to, you know, be able to state their, their feelings, their opinions in a, in a receptive or productive place, so that's, that's not something I thought about, that's an interesting idea. The, the sort of third big item is just need to incorporate, or we need to incorporate HR's new ethics policy, and I mentioned this at the last uh, Board of Finance meeting I was at. Um, it's just going to, it's just so that there's more, a more streamlined, you know, uniform uh, definition of what that is from whether you're reading the purchasing policy or an employee handbook or whatever it might be, we should, it should all reflect the same things. So those are probably the three biggest things I would be bringing to you uh, to work on and make sure you guys are comfortable with, or if you have any ideas about, at a, at a follow-up meeting.
Hi, Adam, it's Jim Myers here, I just wanted to ask you, just in terms of, you know, process, um, do you see, you know, all these like living document changes that you discussed was part of your like task three in the presentation you gave to the board when we, when we approved this document, do you see your role as sort of like coming to this committee with maybe the wording and the language and just, you know, showing it to us in a redline version from this point on, and then we would kind of help craft it, edit, give our, our, our feedback, or are you looking for us to help you in actually authoring that?
Well, I guess I would say I would definitely, definitely be open to a two-way street. Um, and I, meaning, I would definitely be bringing ideas to you and would be looking for your buy-in and, and any edits, things like that, but if you, you know, through the years that you guys have as, you know, representatives of this town, if there are things you're concerned about, I definitely would want you to bring them to me, and whether it's you giving me language or me trying to figure out a solution.
I mean, my preference is, is that you're, you're the, the resident expert, you know, we hired you for that, and so my, my, my feeling would be that you would bring this sort of first pass to us and then we would get a chance to look at it and just sort of make sure we understand it, we're, we're interpreting it the way you meant it to be. And then for some of these things like MRO, where it seems like it, it sounds like there's a little bit more to it, maybe those are, those are the ones that we have more of a dialogue around the table, and then we go back and craft it, that's just a thought.
Understood, yes, that that sounds perfect to me.
Okay.
So when you're talking about these three areas that you pointed out, is the idea that, that the document that we have is going to, is going to, I mean, it sounds like it is, it's going to be further edited? Like, so between, between September and now, if you're, has something happened or that would, that would necessitate a change, or you or you just never arrived at the, the version that made most sense?
Are you talking about, um, from the fall of 23 to the fall of 24, or from the fall of 24 to now?
Well, so the one that we have right now, we approved without the red line.
Yeah.
So we're uncomfortable about that, but at that meeting in his slide presentation in task three, he had pointed, there were like six different items that were called living document changes, that he had not actually implemented yet. So that's why I, I, I look at this as it's a still working project, and I think that we should make sure that I, the next time we go to the board in June, that these get addressed.
Yeah, okay.
And we can go to him and say, all right, he's, he's identified all of the biggies and we've addressed them, we've helped him craft it. And we can kind of put this to rest for a little while.
And they send them to you or if he needs video or whatever.
And we should not have to touch it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For a while.
Okay, so, yeah, there's.
And so we get there, I feel.
I think there was always the intent that we might have to amend this and adjust it as, as needed.
And so with the MROs, was it, remind me, what, what the issue was, was it just the, the, the sort of defining who was local, or was it the process of getting updated pricing from them, like what was the?
It's, well, yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of all over the place. Um, yeah, how do we, so first of all, I think there's conflicting definitions sort of in different parts of the document. Um, I think there's also, or maybe more than conflicting definitions, there's, there's oh, my understanding of the program is that it was to promote utilizing local vendors, yet some of the, the language that ended up getting put in there actually makes it more restrictive than if you're just to buy something from anybody, meaning, you know, currently the bid threshold in the new policy is, you know, up to $10,000 is at department head's discretion. $10,000 to $25,000 is three quotes, and $25,000 plus is a competitive bid, but the wording in the MRO section says you can't use it for anything more than $5,000. Now, I think the intent of that was to, to highlight that this should be used for quote-unquote "small dollar purchases", but the way it ended up being, it's actually more restrictive than the rest of the policy, so that, that kind of thing just concerns me, and I just don't, I'm just not sure I'm clear on what the is it to promote local businesses, is it to just make things a little bit easier for our departments? Like, that's what I'm hoping to get a little clarity, clarity on both, you know, maybe from economic development and DPW, people that might have an interest in that uh, language, and then bring that to you guys to see what you think as, again, sort of representatives of the town, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Because some town, I'm not suggesting this, but in some towns, they actually have like a local bidder preference, where you're basically saying, um, you know, if a loc, if a bona fide local company based in your community um, is within, say, 10% of a low bid, they can actually swoop in and take the contract. Um, I had that in my previous town, and it was very definitely an economic development thing, you know, so that we could say we were doing this to try to promote local businesses. Is this that sort of thing or not, you know, I, I'm just not really clear on that, so.
I think it was intended to be, and at one time, I'm sure, like, a couple policies ago, we did have the local bidder um, piece in there, and when we tried to consolidate the purchase in, um, document, I'm going back maybe, you know, 10, 15 years now. I think that came out and there was some unhappiness about it, um, with some local vendors. I kind of remember that piece about, um, so, so I think maybe they were trying to bring that back.
Yeah, so the, you know, I can spend some, so you said the next meeting is going to be in April?
Yes. That worked.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just trying, I'll just, I'll make sure to spend some time in the coming weeks, really trying to get some, some well-thought-out plans on this and, and input from you know, like I said, maybe Mark Barnhart in economic development as a, as an ear on the local businesses and DPW, who is maybe most likely to use this sort of thing, and really just try to come up with a, a comprehensive recommendation for you guys.
Yes, I remember there were two reasons for this, and one is because if someone's paying, paying local real estate taxes or paying to rent in our town, like, we should try to help them a little bit, and then two is, it's nearby, so it's, it's quicker and easier to use that vendor than having to drive a distance to go someplace else.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I have a general question, you can answer it, Adam can answer this, but this is just the process of how you interact with the town departments, let's put the Board of Ed off per se for now, but just so I understood. Um, is there a certain threshold, uh, based on the dollar amounts, that the departments can kind of just act on their own and hence reason you're going to be training them? And, and therefore you're really just their source to go to when they maybe have a question? But then the larger things kind of come directly, have to go through the purchasing department, I was trying to understand sort of a separation of what your department does versus a local department does. I mean, you know, I, I'm, another department does, I should say.
Right, yes, so the, the dollar amounts I kind of threw around a minute ago are, are sort of a good guide. Um, up to $10,000 is at basically department head's discretion, so any, you know, you can sort of just go out and get pricing, and if it's under $10,000, you don't, you don't have to talk to purchasing. We will come into play once a purchase or, you know, once a, once a purchase requisition is put in place. Um, because we, we do the final, you know, we issue the POs, but in terms of policy, uh, that's on them, between 10,000 and 25,000, it's sort of a hybrid situation where um, you need to get three quotes, and you can either do that on your own, or we can assist and do a sort of informal or semi-formal request for quote process. Um, anything expected to be over $25,000, uh, they need to be, the department needs to be working with purchasing. Um, so we can either, uh, put, put the item out to bid or see if there's a government contract that we can piggyback off of. Um, and so I've got three, well, I've got two buyers and an assistant director, and basically they end up, one of them ends up being the point person uh, with the end user department, uh, to see them through that process.
So for the middle one, do you collect the quotes and check that they're legitimate quotes and current quotes?
So if if we are assisting with, again, that sort of semi-formal request for quote, the answer is absolutely yes. Um, if they're doing it on their own, um, I see them, but not till a little bit later, usually it's when, um, they're entering a purchase requisition, they have to, um, upload that backup on, like, into Munis as a part of the purchase requisition record, um, so I won't approve the requisition until I see the three quotes. Um, I guess I'm just making that distinction because if we've assisted with the process, the quotes will be coming directly to us. Uh, whereas if they do it themselves, I, I, I still see it, but just a little bit later.
But it's not actually purchased, the requisition is before the purchase actually happens?
Well, that's, that um, yes, that, correct, that's how it's supposed to be.
Okay. Any other questions? Any question?
See, I'll, I see.
So I guess, is the idea that one of the subsequent meetings, Connie would come and talk about maybe overlap with any of her audits?
So originally I had requested Connie come tonight to, because she has the input from her internal audits and what she's seeing out there. Um, but she said she couldn't be here, but Adam has said he's spoken with her and works with her regularly, so I, they're sharing the input already.
Is there something, is there, is there anything like worth mentioning now, just, it's happened since, I don't know, since September?
Um, not specific to the policy, but I, I do think there's value in having her um, be available to this subcommittee because there is overlap at times, she'll often, you know, find, have a finding in her audit that could be useful, you know, a useful suggestion for us, so I, I think it's a good idea to have her on tap.
So part of, I also sit on the audit committee, and at our last audit committee, she gave us the update on quite a few of her internal order reports, and one of my concerns with some of her findings weren't with the policy itself, but it's after the policy and going back and checking the work that purchasing has done. So, um, for example, when you have a one-term contract and that someone's actually maintaining the insurance documents and, um, that that's current, or that they're following the rate increases that were agreed upon. And so she was still finding that that, that check was lacking, and so I guess that was one of the things I wanted to look into is how do you get all those things that all the hard words that purchasing has done and out back to the department so they know to check? And, and before they approve payment, you know, make sure we've done our homework in that we're, um, pay the right amount.
It's a great question, it's also a little bit of a tricky question, but it's something that we're, we're thinking about, it's something we're working on, I, I would like to think that we've made some good progress in the last several months. Um, we, the, the caveat being, it's sort of, um, I can't think of the right term, but we have sort of parallel or external, uh, systems that we're using to, to track those things, so, meaning, you know, an Excel spreadsheet or, or something like that. Um, a, a real goal of mine, whether it can happen this year or not, is to add some, uh, contract management software. Um, it's something that we're actively looking into, a little bit more expensive than I thought, but, um, it would, if we could get the one that I'm currently, actually, I'm not even going to say that, the two that we've looked at are both very functional uh, when it comes to those specific items you're talking about, um, in terms of setting, um, you know, my, sort of milestone flags when a contract is expiring or a, or a renewal period is coming up and, and prices need to change and and systems to make those changes right in this, in Munis basically, um, so that you don't even really have to almost think about it. Um, so that, that's currently, we, I, again, we've made improvements, but it's more manual at this point still, so there's definitely room for improvement, so.
So is, they have the ability, like, in Munis to enter, like, if you, if you have like an insurance policy on a contract to flag when it's going to expire, so like the month before Munis will tell you?
Exactly.
Is it expiring, getting a backup, or?
Yeah, so we looked at the Tyler or Munis contract management module, that's one of the two we've looked at so far, and um, again, a lot of positives when it comes to those functions. So, um, it's something I'll, I'm hoping for in the next year or so to add to our, our system.
Okay, and then same thing for rate increases then, or different contract terms?
Yeah, it would, yeah, it would be, it would fall on us to input the information, um, but basically, what would happen is we would, we would create a contract with terms and conditions and everything in Munis, and then when an end user department um, is going to enter a purchase requisition, they would basically have like a drop-down box where they could select that contract, and it would automatically fill the requisition with the correct pricing. Whereas right now, I think a lot of departments are just kind of doing, I don't know if you'll know this term or not, but blanket POs, where it's just say, uh, you know, a a flat dollar amount of say $10,000 or $50,000, whatever, and then, um, you know, as invoices come in, they just pay down from that blanket. With this format, it would be specific to like actual line item pricing, which would definitely address what you're talking about. I'm excited about it. I'm trying not to get too excited in case it can't happen right away.
Yeah, but I mean, this is the board that you need to come to that if you need our help to push through a purchase, you know, we we can, no question. And so that would be good for us to know what would be helpful for you to do your job better.
Oh, great. Thank you for saying that.
First selection might not agree with me.
Well, I would say Mr. Gerber has been pretty, this has been on his radar too. He, I, I don't, he doesn't know prices yet. We don't know all the prices yet, but he, on the surface, he's definitely supportive of this idea. So.
That's good to hear.
Sounds good. Good progress.
Great.
Do we want to talk about any of the other things that were depth that Adam mentioned that he'd like to work on? Or are there still more things from your discussion with Patty that you're looking to address?
Well, the only other thing, this was a later note with me and Connie. And honestly, I'm fine either way. This actually worked out okay the last time, but emergency waivers, the way the policy is currently written, which was based on input from the previous administration's town attorney, was that whenever there's an emergency purchase, we need to go to the board of finance for a concurrent. And Lori and the previous town attorney had kind of understood that to mean as long as there's like an email chain. So let's use an example. Let's say a boiler, a critical boiler blows in the middle of winter in a town building. And we have to act quickly to get that up and running. The, the sort of previous understanding was that this concurrence could take place in sort of an informal email type setting or phone call type setting. And, and the new town attorney, well, you know, he's not so new now, but Phil Attorney Piers basically said that there's no such thing as a concurrence. When it comes to, you know, freedom of information rules and, and, you know, meeting agenda rules, it either needs to be all or nothing, basically. So I don't know if you recall, what a couple of months ago, we did have to call a special meeting for an emergency waiver. I think in that case it worked out okay, but do we want to pull that language? And make it something where you guys are just notified? Or do we want to, you know, stick to formalize that it, you know, require, an emergency waiver requires, you know, a, a, a special meeting of the board to, to approve. So that's something for you guys to think about. I don't honestly have a strong opinion either way.
I have a few different feelings on it because I've seen it both ways. Originally, when I first came on this board, we were building all the schools. Whenever there was a major change order, we, we got called in on an emergency basis. And as long as you get five of us together, you know, even if it was the next day, we came in to vote and approve purchase order that needed to get changed to keep the passes down. And, and that actually was quite hard at times because to get five out of nine people in a day's notice isn't always easy. So we changed it. And then it seemed to be that all bid waivers disappeared. And which wasn't a good situation because no one was reporting back to us when, when they happened. But like example of where that emergency one really works is in the Thammyel Public Library, the pipes broke and they did a bid waiver immediately. So they were able to come in and clean it up, then fix the pipes before mold set in or like they were able to. And I know that is like a good situation. So this should be something that if an emergency happens in town, that there must be like a two or three member committee, maybe that could make that decision to go forward, like, you know, the director of finance and first select bid or like two people somehow that could make that decision in an emergency and then report back to us, you know, within 24 hours or something.
I like that idea of sort of laying out a sort of multi, yeah, whether it's the CFO and first select bid, you know, I, I like that idea because you know, then we're not just relying on a single person. There, there will, you guys would have some confidence that some, you know, multi angled or multi, you know, different views have weighed in on this. And then, yeah, definitely reporting back to you in a prompt manner would, would probably be a good, you know, good language in there.
Does it, is the language as we now, does it distinguish between, you know, waivers necessitated by an emergency where you actually have to protect town property from further damage versus a change order on a building project?
Yeah. So it for normal, well, for normal bid waivers, which are identified, there's, there's a pretty good definition of a, of several different types of waivers. I'm supposed to be reporting to the whole board quarterly with an updated report. I don't know if you remember, I came, I think it was a separate meeting. They're all kind of blurred together now, but right, I gave a little presentation about like maybe 30 or 40 bid waivers that had taken place in the first half of the fiscal year so far. So that's, that's what the policy dictates right now for those sort of run of the mill bid waivers. And it's just emergencies that have this separate carve out to get sort of pre-authorization or again, concurrents from the board of finance.
You're having to do that for, for both the schools?
I think it was schools that we had to come in pretty quickly, like we were coming in once a week almost to approve because they didn't want to wait till like our next meeting.
It seems like there should be a distinction between, hey, the pipes in the library broke and now we want to put a, you know.
Hurricane Sandy hit or something.
Yeah, I think that would make sense to have maybe some distinction there, but probably should study the language a little closer.
Okay. Well, I'll I'm happy to put some thoughts down and share them with you, with you all. Is it appropriate to, to email that to you guys or does it have to be in the form of a, a formal meeting like this?
Um, it's a good question.
I'd probably say attach it back to the next, next meeting just for.
Right. Yeah. So I think you can send it before the meeting, but we can send it to Jen to post it as handouts for the meeting or as a backup to, to this meeting. I know there's certain rules with drafts don't always have to get posted. So like it's a working process, there's different rules, but I don't want to exactly say what they are. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, Jen?
Adam, do you have an idea of how many emergency waivers we did in, you know, the past year? I've been a part of one. I've only been on the board for a few months, but has it been a lot?
No, just, just the one and maybe one or two others since I've, you know, in the two years I've been here, it's really, it's really an extraordinary circumstance. That said, there, the, the sort of again, run of the mill waivers, those are probably, you know, I would guess 30 to 50 per year, but those are again, based on a very, very clear definition of, you know, things that are carved out in the policy. So it might sound like a lot, but it's, it's actually down quite a bit from before the policy was, was changed.
And they're for good reasons. Like what type of reasons do we do it like a regular waiver?
The biggest ones would be if something is a clearly defined sole source item, meaning, you know, only one company either makes it or is legally allowed to sell it in our region, something like that. The other big one is stuff on the school side. Special education services, educational consulting, things like that. Those are really the two biggest, you know, by both number and, you know, by both quantity and dollar amount, those are the, the two main ones.
Any other questions?
So I want to, does this policy apply to the board of that or do they have a different policy?
They, it applies to them and I worked very closely with Courtney Laborius over there. You know, to make sure that their needs were being met. And yeah, it's sort of a unique situation where they follow the policy and I'm involved in their, you know, their purchase requisition approval hierarchy. But and we put out a number of bids for them. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Any other questions in general for Adam?
I think just seeing that, I've seen that, that run line document probably helpful. It might be really busy, but also if you had that if that's a PowerPoint, right? It sort of outlined pretty much of what we discussed today. Did you do a PowerPoint presentation?
For the last meeting?
Yeah. Right. When we, when we originally met on, on the purchasing policy, there was a PowerPoint, I think.
Yes.
Send that to us as well.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I'll take care of that tonight.
Thank you. So I think what I would like to do is now between, between now and our next meeting is you want to go back through the purchasing policy and look at those areas you pointed out to us because whenever I try to read the whole document at once, it puts me right into sleep. But if I can look at specific areas, that's helpful and I'll try to see like, you know, what we can do to make it smoother and work better and more meaningful. And then I guess in the meantime, if you and Connie can, if there's any other issues or that you want to have us take a look at, that would be helpful as well for the next meeting. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. So I guess then we can adjourn and we will see each other in February.
Thanks, Adam.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
No, thank you guys. Looking forward to it.
Bye bye.